Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at five thirty P M. And I will call to order the Free Town Board of Suck Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. We will be going into executive session and then returning back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following reason. Master on Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body in the chair so declares and do Chuck McComber. Reason why. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Slickman Loaks?
Yes.
Slickman Sager?
Yes.
Slickman Matthews?
Yes. We are now in executive session. All right. We are now back in open session from executive session. We'll move on to agenda item two. This is the executive session minutes from five, three, two thousand and twenty-three. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from five, three, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion made.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we have the open session minutes from four eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from four eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we have a presentation on the master plan process by Serped.
Did you need a minute?
Yeah, sorry, we didn't give you enough time to. I'll come back to that. Just give me a thumbs up when you're ready to go.
Sure, thanks.
Okay. We can move on to agenda item five, which is the license renewal between the town of Free Town and the Free Town Regional Food Pantry for the old police station to be utilized by as a food pantry. So, let's see, Craig's here. I mean, if you want to say any words, come up or just kind of maybe speak to the success of it thus far and didn't expect you to some public speaking tonight, did you, Craig?
I know. Well, I was, the Free Town Food Pantry is an incredible success. I mean, we are doing between seventy-five to a hundred Free Town families a week. And then the same thing, another seventy-five to a hundred families with surrounding communities being Rochester, Fairhaven, Lakeville, Dayton, Berkeley, all of those families. On top of that, we service the seniors individually as they need it. So they don't have to, we have a new council on aging person. So I deal with Rebecca directly for whatever she needs. We do as best we can follow those people. We're also doing thirty-five families a week. We have a program that we put in place called the Backpack Program. And what that is, we partnered with the superintendent from the school and they do thirty-five, between thirty-five to forty families a week. They come in every week and we fill backpacks so that the kids have food over the weekend. So that nobody, no kids have to go hungry. And now we just partnered with apona quit and we're doing a similar program for apona quit.
And Awesome.
We just started that two weeks ago. So there it's, it's extreme right now, the amount of families and the stuff that we're going through. I mean, we, we've now partnered on top of what we get from Stop and Shop. We have Ocean State Job Lot that we're getting between four and six pallets of food a week from them. We get it from Amazon now is giving us all kinds of paper products and, you know, all miscellaneous book. That's Amazon here in Fall River, the one over here. We get it from Millboro, we get it from Taunton also. So we expanded like unbelievably, unbelievably. And now we also partnered with Stop and Shop at their gate there. So now whenever Stop and Shop has a delivery such as, an example is they ordered twenty, twenty-two pallets of chicken from Purdue. And they come to deliver this at Stop and Shop. And if the tractor trailer driver has twenty-four, Stop and Shop will only take their twenty-two. They call us immediately from the gate. We go there and they give it to all the fresh chicken and we pass it out to everybody.
That's awesome. Yeah. I mean, and I've been there a couple of times and, you know, it's, it's amazing just to everyone from the community that shows up to help out. And then, you know, you see, you know, how many families are really are in need, you know? And it's, it's a moving kind of experience to go through, so.
Yeah, and that's, you know, to the point of it's family, not individual, right? So you're hearing that and you say seventy-five on average.
It's not seventy-five individuals, seventy-five families. Like today, just the town of Free Town account was, I think, eighty, eighty-two families in Free Town.
Is it now, I remember at one point it's what you have the Free Town families from one day and then?
Yes. So we allow the Free Town and Sonnet residents to come on Mondays from ten to twelve. And the surrounding communities can come on Tuesdays from three thirty to five thirty. But if a Free Town family is not able to make it on Monday, we allow the Free Town families to come on Tuesday also.
That makes sense.
So they're free. This way, if they can't make it during the day, they can come in the afternoon. So it affords the best of both worlds to the people in town.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So
The one thing I want to say is that the food pantry requested a three-year renewal of three, for three years. I'm concerned with that, given that we're in the middle of these building processes, possibly building new buildings, that we may need that space before a three-year term. So I, I may recommend a shorter term.
I believe there's a clause in there.
I think we can terminate at any time.
Right, you can terminate at any time.
So, so there is a clause that says we can terminate, but obviously we want to give you as much notice as possible without, so that you have time to relocate and service, continue to service the, the families and especially Free Town, but the region as well. I just, it's just something that I wanted to point out.
Yeah, it looks like this, the license is for twelve months, right? This one?
Well, I think the one that we prepared is for twelve months, but the request was for three years, a three-year term. So it can be changed. I mean, I think there's one for one and two years.
Two, right.
We had prepared one for one.
I mean, I think two, yeah.
If you, whatever term you want, no matter how you look at it, where the ability is there for the town to take it back.
That's right.
That's not, that's not even an issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's just to save us, I mean, the time of having to have people come back in for something, we just go over to two years.
I think two years makes sense.
Two years is fine.
Two years is what we had, what we currently had in place.
All right. And then, you know, we know things moved relatively slow, so I'm sure two years, we just.
Two years, I think would be adequate. I mean, we're going to know far in advance of what the plan is.
Yeah.
We've been waiting on a study to come back and then we realized some of the stuff we do have is more wet than we realize as far as wetlands. So giving us that little buffer, two, three years, it's, you know, we want to make sure you're doing God's work in a sense. We don't want to stop that. Same kind of town does need the ability to be able to flex if needed. As I'm sure you can understand that.
That's fine. I got no problem with that at all.
So that would be six, eight, two thousand and twenty-three through six, thirty, two thousand and twenty-five?
Yeah. Yeah, because you might as well just make it as a year round that makes it easier.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Any other comments or concerns?
No, no, thank you.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Craig, appreciate it. With that, I'll entertain a motion to renew the license between the town of Free Town and the Free Town Regional Food Pantry for the old police station to be utilized as a food pantry from six, eight, two thousand and twenty-three through six, thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Ready? Check it out of the way.
You should be able to see it up there.
Well, for the folks in the crowd.
So, good evening. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Philip Hu. I am a principal comprehensive planner with Serped, which is the regional planning agency covering southeastern Massachusetts. I'm here just to present a very short presentation about a regional planning process that we are doing. And what we're doing right now is going to every single one of our communities and just making sure that we have your partnership as we embark on this. So this process is called the just priority, community priority areas of regional significance update, or we call them PDA and PPAs. So why am I here? One is really seeking buy-in from each community. We're a regional planning agency, so we want to make sure that, you know, we're not just coming in and barging in saying, hey, you're got to do this plan. And the second part is just giving you a quick overview of what these priority areas are and how they help your community. So what is a PDA? What's a PDA? A PDA is a priority development area. These are areas that each community identifies for additional potential growth. They meet a regional need for either housing or economic development. And they often have good access to transportation or potential for a good infrastructure. Priority protection areas are areas that are important to protect. These include areas of significant natural or cultural resources. So that includes habitats, water resources like aquifers, historic resources and agriculture. So how do we determine where these PDAs and PPAs are? Well, we act, we ask each community, hey, where, where do you think are the most important places? And we empower each community with data. So we come to the table with a lot of data from zoning, land use, infrastructure, all the basic kind of human data, and then environmental data such as habitats, water resources and conservation areas. So this isn't our first rodeo. This is an update to a previous plan. So in two thousand and eight, that was the first pass. And in two thousand and thirteen, we use embedded data to refine the boundaries and also incorporated a bit more, much more civic engagement to determine where these PDAs and PPAs go. So what are we doing differently this time? Not too much, but a lot has changed in ten years. And we want to make sure that we're capturing all of that. And we want to make sure that these priority areas still reflect the priorities of each of our communities. And we also hope to bring out more modern civic engagement, so a lot more online tools to get feedback. And we also hope to provide much more specific recommendations to each of our communities so they can actually use these priority areas to implement change. So why are we doing this? You know, it's a two-year process. Why are we investing all this time? These priority areas do benefit our communities. So a PDA designation can help communities coordinate local planning and win competitive grants. So in North Attleboro, because of the PDA designation in their downtown, they acquired funding to update their zoning. They got a one point three million dollar Mass Works grant for road and water and sewer improvements. The end result is a hundred ninety-three units located downtown. And as a caveat, every single community is different. So obviously, two hundred units is a lot of units and that might not be appropriate for your community. What are the benefits of PPA? So the priority protection areas very similarly helps coordinate local conservation efforts and help our communities win local grants, competitive grants. So in Norden, the PPA process helped them kind of get a leg up, updating their open space and rep plan. It helped them get a five hundred seventy-five thousand dollar land grant for conservation acquisitions. And the end result is a hundred fifty acres that are permanently protected. So in Free Town, there are ten existing PDAs covering one thousand three hundred seventy-nine acres and three priority protection areas covering a lot more, twelve thousand acres. So this is just a map of hold on.
You're right, folks.
Yeah. I was just trying to see the boundaries. So you can see like some of the purple areas cover the, a lot of industrial areas close to the exist of the future South Coast Rail Station and other kind of industrial centers. And then the green areas cover a lot of important resources such as the state forest. So what's the timeline? So there are kind of three key phases that we do with each of our communities. So the first phase is this kickoff, just introducing this project and making sure that we kind of have your permission to start working with you. The second phase is we're going to sit with your planner and other kind of key stakeholders to look at the existing PDAs and PPAs and say, okay, what has changed? How should we update these? And then the third phase is just coming back to y'all and asking, hey, did we get this right? And the last stage is we bring all the results from all of our communities and have two regional screening meetings to determine which of these priority areas are of the most importance. And they get kind of a special state designation. So your role is really to just kind of say, hey, these are the really important stakeholders who you should talk to as we kind of embark in this planning process. And also, you know, give us your kind of initial thoughts and feedback in terms of what you think are, we should definitely focus on. And I do also want to say that we are working, well, I'm also the project lead for the Free Town Master Plan. So all of that is kind of interfacing. So a lot of the results from that will feed into this process as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that process.
That makes a lot of sense to me. Thank you very much, folks, appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. What challenges do you see for a town like ours, right? We're really in the, we just got our open space plan. Now we're creating this master plan as we move forward into the future. In your experience, what are the challenges that we may face at the beginning versus maybe how overcome them down the road?
Yeah, I think like many of our smaller communities, the challenge really is infrastructure and kind of the pressures of growth in Free Town in particular because of the future South Coast Rail Station will face a lot of that. And also many of our communities are working to understand how they can comply with the three A regulation. And we really hope that this process helps each of our communities like really get a better understanding of that.
Yeah. In your opinion, getting this completed would help us get infrastructure like sewer and water from the MBTA probably into our downtown.
So not necessarily directly from MBTA. So this process is funded by the MBTA. And it is really kind of a very long-range, regional level plan. So no kind of regulations come out of this. So this isn't zoning. It's not saying, hey, you have to do this. And no specific investments kind of come out of this. Where it comes into play is later down the line. Say, for example, a certain parcel you want to go through. There's a process called expedited forty-three D. And that's how you can unlock grants such as Mass Works, which do pay for infrastructure improvements like water, sewer and roads.
Appreciate it.
It's kind of like a little badge and just saying, hey, I'm special.
That makes sense.
We met three requisites, then we could move forward to the next step.
Yeah, so it kind of goes to the top of the pile when they're looking at all the grants from, like, applications from different communities across Massachusetts.
Thank you, thank you for the answer.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. So next is the agenda item six is the omnibus budget as written. So I don't think anything's changed since the last review.
Not for, not for the, you know, the department heads, what they propose.
Yep.
That has not changed.
And one thing to note, the finance committee, you know, is not recommending the, the changes or the salaries that were requested by the department heads. They want to cap that like a four and a half percent, I think, increase.
Percent increase on the department, those four department heads were here at the last meeting.
Yep.
Highway clerk, librarian, or the health agent.
I personally don't agree with that. I personally feel like, you know, we had all the department heads up here. They stated their cases and why they, they think they deserve the money they asked for. That's my personal opinion. I'm not sure if you guys have.
I am. I'm right in line with you, Trevor. I think, you know, it's, we've talked about it before that if we lose them, it'll cost more to replace. So there, you know, we have four good people in front of us and, you know, they stated their case and, you know, the town people decide, but I agree.
Yeah, I don't think there's a question that we have good employees. I don't think that's it at all. No, in other way, I disagreed that they all deserve something, right? But that's something isn't in line with what the finance committee's recommended for sustainability for the town. Now, do I want to give them eight, nine, ten percent? Absolutely. Sustainability wise, they recommend four percent, looking at long-term projections of our town. That puts us right in line. So maybe it doesn't take, it takes more than one year to get to that eight percent. Maybe that's the, that's the goal.
We've also been kind of giving people the heads up that, you know, based on the way the future is looking, that next year is probably not going to be these raises. So I think, you know, they're coming in, it's, it's about four thousand dollars, right? The difference what we were?
It actually might be closer to seventy-eight hundred when I'm trying to balance the two budgets that they're, that they're looking at versus what we're looking at.
So, yeah, so it's, you know, I mean, still it's, I'm not frivolous. I'm, but at the same time, I'm also smart about it and know what it's going to cost to replace people. And it's a little bit different with Chuck and Charles because they're, you know, they're elected, but just, just to board a health agent alone, what we're paying him versus what we're going to have to pay on the open market to get someone to replace him with his knowledge now and it's, it'll be more. So I, I, I understand where they're coming from and you, but I just don't agree with it.
So one question, so if we vote on the omnibus budget as written, are we voting on what the finance committee recommended or we're voting on what?
You vote on what you would like. So you can change any number within this as well. If you, you say, okay, but I don't want to agree to, I don't know, two hundred and fifty thousand for the OPEB.
Yep.
You can change that and you can vote.
But the budget's the budget as, as we've seen previously.
Right.
Okay, so I make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, there was a, there was a sort of a hundred thousand dollars that we're putting into stabilization that was listed on the budget and on the warrant. That got taken off because it was like a double dip, but it's still the hundred thousand.
And do we have a figure for what the total, if, say, between the finance committee recommended numbers and then what the, the omnibus budget we have here, right? The total value delta between those two numbers? Is it like?
Between what they are recommended and what you're?
Yeah, is it like hundreds of thousands of dollars or is it?
No, it's eight thousand, it's about seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand dollars? Okay.
So you, if you look at the last page, this, this, that number I have circled is the budget minus the water department. So that's the number, thirty million, thirty million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
Yeah.
The water sewer enterprise budget is one million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and eight dollars for a total budget of thirty-two million, one hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find you the number for the 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 FinCom's number is, and it's this first number before the water budget, thirty million, five eighty-five, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. So it's the difference between the five eighty-five and the six ninety-three there, like about eight thousand dollars. I can do, I can calculate it for you. And that's just those four raises.
So, okay, just want to put that in context, right? So we're talking about
Like seventy-eight hundred.
Seventy-eight hundred dollars.
I mean, I can give you the exact.
On a thirty, twenty-five million dollar budget. Okay.
Thirty, thirty million dollar budget.
Yeah. All right. So, I mean, yeah, I'm going to propose a motion or I'll entertain a motion, sorry, that we vote to recommend and approve the fiscal two thousand and twenty-four omnibus budget as written.
A motion made.
I'll abstain, I'll, I agree with the finance committee.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then now we just have to close the special in the town, right?
Yeah, I don't think anything has changed on the warrant since you've last looked at it. But you guys might want to peek at it. I don't think I made, you've made any changes, but we didn't close at the last meeting. So this is the final review of it to make sure there's nothing that you want to change before it gets posted.
Yep. Jumped out at us. Yeah. So we asked for language that was included, so everything looked pretty good. So but I mean, I looked through it already.
There's no new articles, all of the articles you have approved. I don't believe the FinCom had it, had any issue with any of the articles.
Got it.
Do you know of anything differently?
I, it seems to be the same that I reviewed last week, so.
Yeah.
Anybody? I'll give you a minute to look through it.
No, no, I, I was just double checking and missed something from the computer-based one to the paper copy. But I think it looks pretty good.
So that was, yeah, that's the annual and then special, same, right?
Special has not changed.
Not changed.
I think we added some explanations to a couple of articles, but we didn't change the actual articles.
Yeah, there was, yeah, everything is highlighted, that was a change.
And obviously, everything's gone in front of council and it's approved and good to go?
Nope.
All right, great. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to review and close and finalize the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for six, five, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we have agenda item eight, which is regarding the undeveloped portion of Proprietary Way for access to land. It's like Nick Blazer here? Mr. Zendies? Who's the one?
Welcome, gentlemen.
Right. So, yeah, I looked at the map. Do we all, you all got that in the packet, right? Just kind of just give us a high-level explanation.
Sure, I have a map here too, if anyone needs to look at it.
Yeah.
But Proprietary Way, we believe to be a town-owned property extending from almost Dartmouth, going through past Chase Road where the state forest now is, that was recently purchased. My family owns twenty-two acres in the back behind one of the properties. And I'm looking to develop a single house lot for myself and use Proprietary Way as access. Proprietary Way from what we found is sixty-six feet wide. We'd be looking to do, we talked to, we would talk to the fire department or the police and see how wide they would like us to go. We would like to do like a fourteen-foot gravel way to that one lot, which is twelve hundred and fifty feet back. Because right now, that is the only access to that property.
So it's landlocked kind of, besides, you know?
I don't want to call it landlocked because we believe Proprietary Way, but right.
I know what you're saying.
Right now, there's no roads to get there.
Gotcha.
And I know there's always concerns about development in the future, but there's quite a bit of wetlands back there to get even two house lots.
Gotcha.
Especially this one property, which map two forty, law eighty-six. I think there's three properties called Zero Proprietary Way.
Yep.
And that's the information we have now. I know we will be going through some old town warrants to look at Proprietary Way, but from a map.
Yeah, I'm looking at the map here, yeah.
Yeah, the Bristol County Commissioner's Plan dated eighteen ninety-five has Proprietary Way in existence. From Billy's Lane all the way up to, I think Lakeville it goes to.
Lakeville, yeah.
It goes and stops at Lakeville. But across Chase Road now, that's all conservation land or I believe it's conservation.
All right, that.
I know Mike is here, he might have information as well.
Yeah, Mike give any input on this?
A whole lot, I mean, if somebody has a question.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Nick has covered it pretty.
It's pretty thorough.
Pretty thoroughly. Proprietary Way does run from, usually I say Lakeville south. It stops close to Billy's Lane currently. At one point in history, it did go further south. It may pick up again on the south side of Bullacrood, I'm not certain of. As far as the town's current maps and records and things show, the closest thing I could compare it to now is Nestle's lane, which is off of Keen Road in East Free Town. It's not an accepted road. It's not somebody's private property. It's not, it's just kind of there and it's.
No man's land a little bit.
On the left, if you, if you were to leave here and flip a few paths to Highway Department, you would hit to the left. You can kind of see where Proprietary Way. You can kind of see where Proprietary Way is on the north and and you can walk it, you could, I think if you had a TV, probably get up parts of it. South of Chase Road, it's less defined, so I don't envy Nick in having to figure out exactly where it is.
I I think the location is pretty clear that we can go back and pass deeds and our own deeds, um, be able to lay it out. We had um, the north side of Chase Road laid out a hundred percent, we had a big subdivision uh, trailer. Uh, facility that we were gonna put in there, so we have found every single bound. And that was also mapped with the state when they uh, took it from us, it's part of the package. So, it's well-defined, there's a lot of bounds out there, so that's not a difficult job.
Obviously.
Yeah, I I mean, I think one of the difficulties in this, I think, is determining if the town owns it or not. And that's the difficulty, right? But I believe from all of the sources we have looked at and reviewed. It would appear that it is owned by the town, but we can't find anything that actually gives us that information. Um, we can't say, find anything that tells us we don't own it either, but that that's the difficulty.
Taxes on it, right? Then, and we didn't take it, right? If they have a defined property.
Nobody's paying taxes on it. Uh, most deeds I have not done anything like super thorough, but most deeds that I've reviewed. People's properties defined as going to along and away from Proprietary Way, not across it or into it. Proprietary Ways, if you go back through some of the development in town historically, and I'm talking, you know, two or three hundred years ago. A sonnet had kind of pretty well-defined roads, East Freetown had a lot of Proprietary Ways, um, and just. Like I'd like it to Nestle's Lane because that's not accepted currently, but you'll see Rayleigh Road referred to as Proprietary Way. You'll see East Howland Road referred to as Proprietary Way, Gurnee Road, uh, Keen Road, I think at one point. So it's not uncommon, it's just that out of all of them, this seems to be the one that nobody's ever bothered to do anything with. And different people own land in different circumstances and maybe it not been, it might be more developed now than it is, it's just. The one that's last man standing, so.
Um, I I also spoke with um, Chuck McConbar, he knows the highway, he's, he has no concerns. Whatever the board should decide, there's no issues, he didn't have any further background on this either.
I, I personally don't see an issue with it because it's not like it's gonna open up some sort of Pandora's box, right? Where we do this, then all of a sudden everyone's gonna come forward to all these different parcels of land and say.
Right, there's two behind that and it quite wet back there.
Yeah, and then.
So here is the concern that I see for the town is that if, I mean, you. Uh, he needs permission to improve this roadway if the town in fact owns it, right, from the, from the um, road commissioners. If in fact that happens and he puts in a roadway, we own it, so the issue becomes the maintenance of it. I'd be fine as long as Nick is there, but what happens down the road? And that's the concern, and I don't know of a way to protect the town from that. I talked to Chuck about that, he didn't have a concern with it. Um, so I I just point that out.
What do we do with Nestle's Lane right now? Cause you're saying we don't, it's similar situation.
Do you not, my understanding is if the ruts get bad enough, the highway department will deposit some grindings, cause we, we have a responsibility to. Make fire and police able to get down there, but we don't, to my knowledge and from my conversation with Chuck, maintain Nestle's Lane in any other way. We don't file it, we don't widen it, level it, other, other than grinding to prevent the ruts from getting too bad, but.
And I guess is there something that we can do to protect that so that if you decide in a year down the road, Nick, you want to sell the house? That would, would continue to keep that relationship where someone didn't buy in and do something, I don't know, I'm just.
I'm not sure.
Thinking else at the.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we could, what we could do, not even a deed restriction would protect that.
Um, I feel like it's like, it's a, it's a town problem, that like we didn't do our, like, you know, it's not a Nick problem, you know, I mean.
Yeah, no, I don't know, I mean, I'm willing to obviously pay for the access back there, um, to a certain extent, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as down the road, I'm open to options to discuss. Um, with you guys, on how we could even have a meeting with Chuck or speak to him.
I mean, Chuck is amenable to anything from my conversation with him.
Yeah.
It's just protecting the town down the line.
Right.
And he sounds like he's already done most of the homework, talking with the right people as far as.
I tried to.
Making sure that you have the right width and distance needed to be sure there, that you can accommodate those vehicles if needed down the road. God forbid you need them, but I never know, right? So, yeah, I think we just kind of land, sit in there, wait for someone to touch it and then use it for family purposes, which is what this town's built on.
Right. Right, like I said, just a single house lot on that, uh, there's actually two properties, but um, the other one's even further. So it would just be one house on those two.
So the board would need to grant uh, permission to improve Proprietary Way to where I was gonna do that. And I'm sure there'll be requests for easements down the line, depending on what you do with electric.
That would have to go through the town, is that correct? The town would have to sign an easement for the electric?
Probably, so there'll be more stuff forthcoming, and then I think you need to determine who's gonna govern. The actual road construction and what he, what actually, how the road gets constructed and drainage and what gets put out there.
Yeah, so. Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Because it's not gonna be a subdivision roadway, it's really gonna be uh, an improved way.
But you still need to file probably a SWIP, right? And like a do.
We'll have to go to a conservation as well for this roadway, cause the front of it does have some wetlands there. Um, so we'll have to get obviously approval by them.
Do you think that will be covered then by conservation?
I mean, I think it should be deferred to the planning board, but because they're the ones that handle road and, you know, they know. They do waivers and what you put in a gravel road for two lot subdivision quite frequently in this town. I mean, I I I've done one, um, but it would be up to the board.
So, and so that'd be a part.
What the planning board though would be governing at that point, cause it's not a subdivision of any kind, it's not a public road of any kind.
Our form A, we're not changing lot lines, right?
But you need to have frontage on a street, right? And in order for it to be a street, we have to define what a street would be. And I'm just saying, they would defer it, they have control as the road commissioners, but defer it to the planning board in terms of. Determining how it's constructed and in the best interest of the town, since we're gonna own this.
Yeah, so, or, okay.
Yep. The planning board though, a lot of times will go to Chuck.
I'm not saying that it would be any different than what you're proposing, I'm just saying that they, you know, they are the ones that govern, like I said. Two lot subdivision with gravel road, they approve those all the time.
Next door, they just approved it as the most recent one.
Eight what?
The one ninety-one Chase Road, the planning board.
I have a dupe way, that's a gravel road with two house lots on it, that's not asphalt, that's just a basic road, it's gravel.
So what if, yeah, what if the motion here was, you know, we, that we grant the right to um, to improve Proprietary Way. Uh, but just with like written approval from Chuck on the design.
Yeah, so, cause I, we haven't, I've contacted a civil engineer, obviously, but I haven't gone any further without talking to the selectmen.
Cause I mean, I think that, that just kind of covers us to make sure.
And I think, yeah, in that point, who is an engineer is gonna be the professional, that's also gonna give him all the plans for drainage and everything along with.
We have to do it based on the contour and the wetlands and everything, so, they're gonna go down the right road for it.
Yeah.
I would suggest to you too, just the vote you're gonna take, just include in it or either in the motion or as a discussion. Have Nick give you copies of all the research that he's done, so if you have something to fall back on, if someone says, why did you make this decision?
Yeah.
You can see everything that he's found that says this is.
Title search.
Yeah, all you'll need is deeds, I mean, all the deeds around there, going back to mostly uh. You know, DM Randalls and Gurneys, it's all along Proprietary Way and.
Did you say you had a map, eighteen ninety-five?
Uh, that's in town hall, town hall, and there is a map of Bristol County Commissioners Plan dated eighteen ninety-six that shows Proprietary Way.
Do you have that?
I have an eighteen ninety-five map in my office, I can't tell you what exactly.
Yeah, cause I thought we didn't have it, that we, that, the map of eighteen ninety-five didn't show Proprietary Way, but then the assessors' maps that came in in nineteen fifties. Show it.
Nineteen fifty-three is the earliest assessors' map, but it's there, it's, it's trees, it wasn't being traveled at the time, but it's there, it shows up on the map.
So if you have that, eighteen ninety-five, that.
I was just told that was in town hall, I can find out where he found it from.
Okay, cause that would be good for us to have a copy of that.
Is in existence then, is what I was told.
Okay, we haven't seen it, so.
I, I haven't seen it either, but if it's in town hall somewhere, I'll find it. I'll have to find out where he saw it from, right?
Yeah, so I guess I really just include the supporting documentation in the, in the letter we get approval, right? So we just kind of have a, a nice easy thing that, if it ever gets questioned, we can go and point to it as far as it, right? And then, so I guess, and this is kind of the same, like, do I also have to do, you know? This other motion of using, the owner using the undeveloped portion, or is that kind of all in one?
What is it?
Like, is, I guess, is there a difference between utilizing?
All undeveloped, so.
So I was, I'm saying the grant, the grant to improve the Proprietary Way, does that cover that?
The grant to improve it, it will, I would, I would probably try to make it as definitive as you can. You, you're gonna grant him permission to improve Proprietary Way um, from Chase Road. South, southally for twelve hundred and fifty feet.
Uh, depending on what the building inspector or zoning enforcement officer, I may need to go a hundred and seventy-five just for frontage. I don't know what he wants.
Approximately, or to his lot, what's the?
Yeah, the map, map two forty parcel eighty-six, right?
Two forty eighty-six.
The map two forty eighty-six.
I believe that's the correct lot number.
To an extent.
Yeah.
That the building inspector will allow for adequate frontage.
And I did speak to the building inspector.
Yeah.
Um, he said, obviously, this is the first step and he would follow suit, but I didn't get into specifics about how far I should do this.
All right, I'm gonna try to stumble through this motion, so bear with me, folks.
I have just a quick question, so I know it may be contingent on Chuck, so how, what would be my steps, just sending. Documents to you guys to transfer to Chuck, is that what?
I mean, I think they could probably go directly to Chuck, if you just, then just get him signed and then, I, I mean, where, I guess where would those be uh? Housed, right, that they sign documents?
I want the documents of whatever you have to show that the freetown may have ownership, right? Then you're gonna prepare some documents showing how you're gonna construct that roadway.
Correct.
Um, you're gonna have to prepare that for, for the um, conservation as well.
Yes.
So just give us a copy of those as well, just give us a copy.
I'll, I'll most likely go to Chuck first, we can get it defined.
Yeah.
Do the plans, go to conservation.
And just C C us when you can on what you're submitting, but other than that, I think.
I can just C C you or the entire.
If you send it to us, I send it to them.
Perfect.
I, 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 I'll get them the information.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
All right, so um, I'm gonna entertain a motion to um. To grant approval for the property owners of map two forty parcel eighty-six to improve um, Proprietary Way. Um, from Chase Road to their lot, mentioned, uh, forementioned and um. With the requirement that the um, uh, highway surveyor approves the plans. And that supporting documentation is included for um, for record keeper.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor? I was just listening to myself talk, I didn't know.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Thanks.
Congrats.
All right, moving on to agenda item nine, which is um. This is for us to move to a four-month billing cycle for the ambulance abatements rather than a three-month billing cycle. So it says, yep.
Yeah, I actually asked Harry if this would be uh, amenable because we're writing off so much of our ambulance billings. And I know myself, sometimes when the medical bills or things come in, I just put them offside and they tend to sit there for a month or two before I really process them. So I thought we could maybe capture more of the revenue if we just made, went to a four-month billing instead of three. This, currently, we bill for three months and then we write off whatever isn't collected.
Yeah.
So this would be, we'd bill for four months and then still write off what's not collected. And it's only, um, it's just a policy and then we send it over to the billing company, it doesn't change anything that we do internally.
So, yeah, that makes sense, uh, I know, I remember this kind of came up because I think that this company generally does like a six-month.
Six-month.
And then we kind of went, we were doing a three-month.
And we stayed at three months.
And so I guess, is Chief Ashley, oh?
He's fine with it, he, you know, he, he, um, I had that discussion and he said that was fine with him. I mean, if you look at the write-offs, they've just been increasingly getting bigger and bigger.
They're getting bigger and bigger, and do we think that's due to the times? Do, I mean, this, I know it's quantified, but is it the billing company, what they're doing versus what was being done? Because your, to your point is, it is a lot bigger than it ever was before.
You could say that the numbers are up, right? He used that presentation, stated.
But yeah, I feel like this is like a lot more than even those numbers, but you, you're right, there's something to be justified with that.
Is the way that they, that the new billing company presents them to us. In the past, I think our abatements were just truly abatements for bills that say. Say we bill a thousand dollars and we collect five hundred from the insurance, the residual would be um, written off. And the, those, those were not necessarily represented in our numbers prior to this new billing company. Now it's all of the abatements, so a lot of what you're seeing is abatements, just because we can only accept what the insurance provider was, will pay. Um, so they split it a little differently in the prior company, but I still think a four-month billing might capture. Some of those people that will, will pay or can pay, but just hasn't, haven't gotten around to it. And and let's face it, if they were in a severe accident, they got a lot of things they're dealing with right out of the gate, and it might just take them a little bit of time to refocus.
Makes sense, all right, and there are questions, concerns, you? Okay, so now, I'll entertain a motion to move to a four-month billing cycle for ambulance billing effective seven, one, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then, of course, next is ambulance abatements, so I'll entertain a motion to um. So ambulance abatements and write-offs for April twenty twenty-three are ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Um, and I'll entertain a motion to um, write off for, for those abatements and write-offs.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, we have a transfer request for appropriation transfer between um, within departments from the highway department in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, it looks like this was um, in salary and then someone was um, you know, no longer employed by the town. So there's some extra money there, and as we know, Chuck mentioned last week, the uh, the, I guess their operational budget is down to like six thousand dollars or.
Right.
Or, yeah.
Those are around three now.
Three thousand?
Yeah.
It's getting lower.
They definitely need some cash, pretty much, any questions or concerns on this?
No.
Good house. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for appropriation transfer between uh, between or within departments. For the highway department, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, now we have agenda item twelve, which is the spending plan for the council on aging for the Formula One Grant. Okay.
So I must admit, can I see this one come up? I, I'm thinking NASCAR racing, our seniors are driving around town, but. Yeah, you know, it, it warms the heart when I do see it, I was like, oh, that would be fun.
All right, and so just to kind of review what we have here, so for the um, mine senior center. Uh, yearly bill is thirteen, uh, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, the mini fridge um, is about two hundred dollars. And an increase in weekly hours from sixteen to nine, from sixteen to nineteen for Jackie Grinell um. Uh, for March through June. And I think that's the full grant amount, which is, the spending plan is for two thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents, does that sound correct? Am I looking at the right numbers here?
What was the number you said?
Twenty, two thousand one hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah, the rest, I mean, so that's, that's a portion of the grant funds, the rest will remain undetermined until they come in and they out, they'll ask for. When they come up with a plan for spending the rest of it. The Formula One Grant is given to them by the state every year based on the number of seniors that we have in our population. So, this is, this is how the board, their board has chose to spend some of the money.
Yeah.
Is there certain purviews that it has to fall under for how you can spend it?
So my understanding is from what our treasurer believes, it should be spent on the seniors. So anything that we spend on the seniors is, can be taken from this Formula One Grant, so this is. So as far as mini fridge and, and the um, my senior um, software, my senior center software is for the seniors, so.
Absolutely, well, that's good, cause it's kind of vague, at least, so it's not so direct, right? Where high, it's a little bit more vague how you can.
Where high, it's a little bit more vague how you can spend it, which is good with the grants cuz sometimes it's, you know.
That's my understanding, that it's quite driven.
Broad.
But that's how we're taking it.
Yeah.
Perfect.
It makes sense to me.
Yep, keep proving the lies of our seniors. That's, that's exactly what this is for, so let's do it.
All right, perfect. Uh, with that, I will uh entertain a motion to approve the spending plan for the council on aging for the Formula One Grant.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have a proclamation recognizing Free Town's first responders in honor of Emergency Medical Services Week, uh which is May twenty-first through tw- twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. And I have the proclamation here. So um whereas the emergency medical service is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including prevention, uh preventative medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and others out of uh hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams, whether a career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training to continue edu- uh education to enhance lives, their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week now. Therefore, we, the Free Town Board of Selectmen, in recognition of this speech, do hereby proclaim uh the week of May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as Emergency Medical Services Week. Good?
Yes.
All right, are you folks here for that one? If you wanna say any words, you're more than welcome to. Absolutely. Well, we appreciate it, obviously, and you know.
You're doing good work.
Yep, and yeah, definitely, it's a doubt, it's a.
Definitely have some of the best, some of the best first responders, that's for sure.
It's a warranted proclamation, put it that way. All right, great, thank you guys.
We have to vote on it.
Do you have to, do you have to vote on that?
There's discussion and vote.
So I'll entertain a motion to designate the week of tw- uh May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as Emergency Medical Services Week.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Easy vote.
Now it's official.
All right, now we have uh the class-two motor vehi- uh, whoop, swap, oof. Class-two motor vehicle license for Main Street Gas and Auto Sales uh effective through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
I'm just getting these confused. This is the one across the street from the Circle K, right?
Correct.
Like down the corner of Ridge.
Borges.
Borges.
Yeah, I think because it's Main Street Gas and Auto, like it's just, but that's his license. I don't, you know, it doesn't have the name off there. Might actually still have the name out there.
Yeah, I mean, is it, is this like out of cycle when they usually approve these things?
Yeah, he just filed his application late.
Okay.
But it will still only run till December.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, any questions or concerns? I think they've been selling cars there for as long as.
You, I'm, no concerns. The only concern that I have is, and I think the Board of Health's already gone out there, we do have a town by law, if we got into tires.
Yeah.
It's a hundred max. It's well over a hundred. You know, my concern is, you know, if there's a fire, those things are gonna burn. If it's, if it rains, insects, bugs, rodents. So like I said, I wouldn't mind seeing it cleaned up a little bit more as far as um that area, especially.
I know you had some tires there and it seemed like a bunch of where they were gone and.
Yeah, Kevin went out there and said, hey, can you knock these tires down? But I think from the selling of the vehicles and fixing them, they've grown up. And it's just an eyesore for the community as you drive by it off the highway. It's the first thing you see.
I did, and I, I talked to him about it and apparently the issue is that like there's, it's hard to get rid of tires. And and they uh, it's like a truck, you know, company that comes around regionally and they, and like, they just, they just either didn't come. Uh, like, the last time they came in the area, there was nowhere, you know, so I, I, I know he, I think, I know they know it's a problem. I haven't paid attention to see if it's still there, even though.
Well, I mean.
I drive by it every day. I just wonder those things that becomes like a part of your.
As long as it's on our radar and they're actively trying, it's, you know, it's.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's worth.
For the neighborhood, especially the MBTA's coming in, I'm looking at it going, so we so much more traffic potentially, so many more, so many more eyes on that road. And the, the owners next door have done a great job cleaning up their parking lot and you see the, like, the line that directs you right to the tires and like, ah, see where those tires?
Yeah, I think, I think.
Tire swings, we have to, it's just get it everywhere, every household.
Professionally. Professionally, we can just ask him, maybe there's a way for him to get it, right? I don't know. I mean, you know, if he's having a hard time getting rid of them, I don't, it's not like his whole property's a nuisance, so I, you know, I don't.
No, it's just more of a, a visual thing that I'm sure others think about it as well when they drive by and but they're actively working on it. That satisfies my, my concern, but.
All right, yeah, and we can obviously, you know, talk to Kevin, have him go down there and maybe see, see what the situation is. You know, there might be some other, you know.
Yeah, he's always been a good resident to me, so I.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the class-two motor license for Main Street Gas and Auto Sales effective uh effective through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Did I say that right?
No, yeah, you got uh twelve, twelve thirty-one. You went to the, the.
Oh, sorry, through twelve, effective through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I swear, I think that's what I said.
Before he goes to uh to the land.
Okay. All right, so now we have the um MMA Mute Energy Electrical Program for town buildings. So if anyone speaks to this one a little bit?
Yeah, so this is sort of the same, you know, aggregation plan that we try to do for the town residents. The MMA, uh, you know, the Massachusetts Municipal Aggregation, they try to do for the municipalities. So they, they um negotiate with the utility companies to get us a lower rate than EverSource is paying rate. The problem is it changes every single day. And the rate, like, the rate they give me, they just gave me the newest rates today, but tomorrow it'll be a different rate. So this, well, you'll see the next vote is to have me sign the contract cuz to lock in the rate, I have to sign the contract.
Gotcha.
The decision that, obviously, this is cheaper than what we can get electricity from EverSource for. And electricity is a moving target, right? It, it was really high this winter uh because it's now where they've shut the coal plants down, it's based on natural gas. But everybody's vying for that same natural gas, so that if there's a shortage in natural gas, electricity goes up. So they're giving us a, a rate that they'll lock in. I need the board to determine, obviously, I don't see why you wouldn't do this, but determine the length that you wanna lock it in for from a one to a five-year period. I'd be inclined, I mean, your risk is that it might go down. Right now it's at uh ten point oh oh nine, I believe. I don't foresee it going down.
Neither do I.
A whole lot. So I'm, I'm more inclined to go for a five-year period on that and try to get it in that twelve cent. You know, and that's only that portion. You know how the electric bill is, it's made up of.
What's that five, fifteen percent add delete language?
Or is it?
It's on the, so it's on that pricing page?
Yep.
It just says, so it's a fifty, fifty-five day payment terms, got that. It says fifteen percent add delete language.
That was just the presentation that.
Okay, I just didn't know if there's like some kind of force majeure, they, they could like avoid the contract if prices go above a certain band.
I know.
But we're like, really, really locked in.
Yeah, we're locked in. Um, I don't think, actually, we can get out. I, at any time, we can actually get out.
Okay, so this is just on their side?
Yeah, it's just, it's, you know, it's just that we're locked in, it can't go higher than that. And again, for me, it's, what's the term that the board wishes?
Fine, yeah.
Uh, cuz of course it gets lower the further out, so, and this won't start until um December of twenty-three.
So that's, cuz that's the effective end of our current contract.
Yeah, which is, like I said, ten point oh oh nine, and this would cover, this covers uh nineteen of our nineteen buildings, including, including the elementary school.
Well, good, so I see the five years, right? To me, it looks like the best rate, five years out. Now, if you did ten years, right, like Jerry was just saying, would they give us lower? Is that the?
They're not offering ten years because it's too much risk for that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, okay.
Um, they said this winter, the best they were offering was sixteen cents to uh companies, but right now we're on the lowest it's been in a while, so this is probably the best rates for us to lock in at this point. I mean, you can always ride it out too and wait and see if it's gonna go down over the next few months. But it's changes by the day, which makes it difficult, right? Like, I'd have to call them every single day and be like, what's the rate today?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the known commodity. It's still a good rate. It's gonna be much, yeah.
Yeah, it has its budget and everything else, so that's, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
That's the thing, is then we have some sense of our budgets and where we're going. So like I said, for me, the four or the five year was, makes the most sense.
This includes all public buildings, like this building included?
Yeah, this building, actually, this building wasn't put in the program, so I just got this building put into the program.
That's good.
But, and it includes the Free Town Elementary School because that's still in our jurisdictions.
Gotcha.
Every single one of our town buildings.
All right.
Keep them warm.
So then for the motion, you like just include the, the uh term?
Yeah, I just need the term and then give, and then the next, I think it's the next uh agenda item gives me the, will give me the authority to sign it, yeah.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion um to enter into a five-year term with MMA Mute Energy Electrical Program for the town buildings.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. And then I'll entertain a motion to have Deborah L. Petty sign documents related to the MMA Electrical Program for Town Buildings.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on, we have the postcard for the annual and special. I checked it out. It looks good to me.
It's like the old flip, right? When you flip the page. You gotta get used to it. So this is just the copy, right? It won't look like this. It will just be like the normal ones, right? It'll be one flat piece, same size, both sides.
It's just gonna be a postcard, so it's just gonna be the size you say.
Look like that. On both sides.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Just checking.
Any, anyone see any, any mistakes? I do not.
No.
All right, looks good to me. All right, so that, I also wanna get this out as soon as possible, right? Because the, the last, well, or the elder, um the last time to register to vote is May twenty-sixth, which is coming up. Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the contents of the postcard for the annual special town meetings on six five twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on. We have the postage meter. So is this, is this just extending out the existing contract we have or is it a totally new contract?
I don't know, I haven't seen this.
Eighteen. Yeah, okay. So it's eighteen thousand dollars?
Eighteen thousand dollars?
No, it can't be right.
As I say, we, we, we need to worry about procurement if it's eighteen thousand dollars.
Two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-one cents quarterly.
I scrolled down to the wrong, the wrong, the next one.
You scared me. I was like, wait a minute.
Okay. Never mind.
That's a lot of postage.
I was like, I knew postage was expensive. I didn't think it was that expensive.
I'm gonna be talking a lot about it last couple of meetings.
Yeah, build, build quarterly.
That makes a lot more sense. Been a long day. All right, so we're good with that? Any questions?
Yeah, no.
Oh, good.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement to the town of Free Town and Pitney Bowes for postage meter at the Town Hall effective seven one twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-six.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, now we're at the brush. Okay, so um this is for the brush yard waste shipping at the transfer station. Um, the RFQ to Northeastern Tree Services. Were they the only one who responded to our?
Yes.
Okay, and it's eighteen thousand dollars. Um, we need this done and we don't have a lot of uh options, do we?
Yeah.
So it's, well, it's crazy because that's a year's worth of brush.
Yeah.
Right, that's.
Two years with a.
Last year we did that, wow.
Yeah.
So. Has that gotten up to we know, cuz we're open on, like, we changed the hours last year, right, for the transfer station or one of that? Added to the amount of brush we're getting that now that people have time to bring it over. Just more for metrics than anything else and plan for next year.
There, um, you know, we're now charging for the brush, so we'll, we haven't been up till what, not too long ago, so um we'll, we'll actually be recouping some of the money for this. I mean, I was kind of it's a tough one, but when you're paying eighteen thousand dollars, I guess you gotta do something, yeah.
Yep.
Right.
All right.
Easy enough.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to award the brush yard waste shipping at the transfer station RFQ to Northeastern Tree Services Inc.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, related, I will entertain a motion to approve interim town administrator to approve and sign documents related to the agreement with Northeastern Tree Services Inc.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I'll kick it over to personnel.
Thanks, Jim. All right, item agenda number twenty-one, accept the resignation of Robin L. Kendrick from the Council of Aging Library Community Building Committee effective five one twenty twenty-three. I don't see a vote, but I'll just do the three resignations and we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Create a vote afterwards. Um, item agenda twenty-two, accept the resignation of Walter J. Sawicki. I hope I said that right.
You did.
From the Health Insurance Advisory Committee, effective six thirty twenty twenty-three. Item agenda twenty-three, accept the resignation of Melissa Frappier as payroll coordinator, effective five twenty-four twenty twenty-three. Um, I'm gonna entertain the motion to accept items, agenda items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three as written.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item agenda twenty-four, discussion and vote whether to approve the following appointments. A, Thomas Matthews, the Council of Aging Library Committee Building Committee, effective five fifteen twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-three. B, Harrison Goyette and Alex Columbus as parking control officers, effective five eleven twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-three. All right. Do we have any members here? All right, let's see. So as we just, Robin stepped down, um, as, as the Council of Aging Library Community Building, and this is Thomas Matthews. I believe he was the alternate last time we had the meeting. Am I correct on that, right? And we served it correctly? So this kind of just moves him and um to make him official.
That's why we have the alternates, right?
Exactly. And then, uh, so, and then, of course, Harrison and Harrison Goyette and Alex Columbus were just interviewed by the Personnel Board, myself and a handful of others. And they were selected to join the current commit, uh, current members to make it to a four, four people working the boat ramp in the beach.
Sounds good.
Um, that said, uh, any questions, discussions from, from anyone, all right? Um, I detained the motion to approve Thomas Matthews to the Council of Aging Library Community Committee Building Committee effective five fifteen twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-three. And Harrison Goyette and Alex Columbus as parking control officers, effective five eleven twenty twenty-three through six twenty, six thirty twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All myself. All right, moving on to item agenda twenty-five, discussion, vote on whether to keep or eliminate the alternate position for the Council on Aging Library Community Co- Building Committee. I think we just answered that, right? Uh, I think it worked out pretty well, having someone in the wings ready to go, someone who needed to step down, right?
So originally, we appointed two alternates, right? One that was representing of, of the COA, one that was represented of the library. Um, the library, she, she had stepped down cuz the, the meeting times did were not conducive. She wasn't gonna be able to make any of the meetings. And then this alternate, he has now become part of the board. So I don't know if you wanna go back to having two alternates, one that would represent the COA So I don't know if you wanna go back to having two alternates, one that would represent the COA and then one that represent the library and maybe we put out letters of in, interest. We, we know there's interest in this board. Um, and see, and then the board would then decide who would be the alternates moving forward.
Yeah, so, so the library never filled the shoes after that person stepped down, right?
For the alternate, no. So we have, so, you know, I don't know what the board chooses to do.
Well, I think that, to be fair, right, you have one from each, right, as the alternate, so I think that, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I agree with what, I'm agreeing with what you say, yeah.
And I think this is a, you know, a long process where we may have some movement on that board over time, just because it's the length of a new building and how long it takes. So I think it's always good to have the alternates because they were involved. And then when they have to step in, they're involved. They already know what's, what's transpired prior to, so.
So what's the current makeup right now, right? We, so we'll try and figure out what I'm gonna vote on. To keep both alternates for both committees, right, both sides, right? One for the library and one for the Council of Aging. So that's what my motion is gonna be.
Yep, and then we'll, we'll get interested and we'll present that to the board.
Can I ask a question though?
Of course.
On that, uh, Tom Matthews, was it? Where they say it expires in June of twenty-three, it isn't what, four weeks?
It's because of the way that when all the contracts were new, so it's just that, it's just for the rest of this year.
Right.
So it's just.
So he's automatically put into the twenty, tw- the rest is twenty-three to like.
Right, so he's, he's finishing the remaining of the term that's, that Robin held.
Okay.
And then what we're doing now with all the department heads, all the committee head chairs, we're asking them going, hey, is everyone staying on? Do we need to change anybody? And then when they report back to us saying, yes, everyone's staying on, then we reappoint them for, for the next year. So it just ro- rotates.
For six weeks that he's an alternate.
Yeah, it just makes it clean this way, that way. Everyone's term expires the same time. So next year, when we go back to the chair of the committee and say, are we keeping or everyone, everyone's staying or is it being removed? It's a clean, clean slate, then we can then move forward from there. It just keeps the lines from being blurred a little bit. Any, any other questions?
I have a question also. Now that there are going to be two new alternates, how do you pick those two?
Well, last time what we did was we took the interest, right, and as, as a board, we kinda went down the list and, and, and chose with the, the members, asking for their recommendation of who they wanted. And I would assume, once we get two alternates, we would do the same thing. We'd go to the chair, to the board, to the committee and say, alright, we have X, Y, Z. Who do you want ranked choice, almost, almost ranked choice voting in the sense, who do you want at top tier, second, and things like that. So similar to what we did last time. That way, the Council of Aging has who they want representing them, and then the library has who they want representing them. Again, this committee was put together to make sure it was fair and equitable, make sure everyone's op- opinion mattered, right? And we wanna continue that. So we won't change it this, 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 it's been about a year, six months now, to a year. So we wouldn't wanna change anything at this point. So it's been working, I think, right? So let's continue that. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to, um, maintain the posture and create, well, I think I have to word that correctly. entertain a motion to keep the position of an alternate for both the Council of Aging and the Library Committee for the purpose of being on the Council of Aging and Library Committee Building Committee. Does that make sense?
Enough sense, yeah. So I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Item agenda twenty-six, discussion and vote whether to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and Signal Operator Dwyer. Any questions, concerns with Signal Operator Dwyer? No? Alright, that's pretty straightforward. If, if things, um, I haven't seen anything that stuck out as needing additional questions.
Yep, that makes sense, yep.
Alright. I, and that's facts. I detained the motion to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and Signal Operator Dwyer.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item agenda twenty-seven, discussion and vote whether to approve the memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the town of Freetown and Public Employees Union, Local Two Seventy-Two, Launa. Yeah, we was just more housekeeping as, as, uh, between the MOA with the union and the town of Freetown.
We did something change that was.
I believe, oh, that's the one.
This was, this is the regarding the, you know, the anniversary dates and
Oh, okay, that's right.
The promotion dates and how the employees. They bargained a few years back to have their promotion dates be their anniversary dates moving forward. Um, and then they realized now that it's, um, really hurt them in terms of, you know, they work for ten years and yet they're only on step, you know, two or three because they've accepted a proma- promotion. And I, I think that they felt like instead of uh, being rewarded for staying with the town for ten years, they actually were being penalized, right, on some level. So this worked back and forth and this corrects that language. The language, as I was interpreting it, was correct and I was applying it correctly. But, um, I do see the need to reward employees for being here for lengthy times rather than penalizing them even though they've moved positions within the union.
Yeah.
So this corrects that. I, I, I've been back and forth in terms of, um, is there something that the town should negotiate to receive? But given the current employment situation and the fact that we wanna keep our employees, you know, retention, I thought that it would be best to move forward with this as, as, um, as written, and that helps hopefully keep some employee retention.
Absolutely. Makes sense to me. Alright, I turn the motion to approve the memorandum of agree, MOA, between the town of Freetown and Public Employees Union, Local Two Seventy-Two, Launa.
I'll make that motion. I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, item agenda twenty-eight, discussion and vote whether to approve the disclosure of appearance of a conflict of interest form submitted by Sergeant Thomas Ashley Junior. Pretty, pretty straightforward. As a public employee, he filed a, a disclosure agreement, uh, due to potential knowing of someone or related to someone or thereto, and when it comes to interviewing, uh, being on interview panel. So this is just, uh, you know, what's expected by all town employees and municipal employees.
One of the, one of the applicant's, his step cousin.
Right. So.
Small town stuff, right?
Any, any concerns, questions, any?
Okay.
No.
Alright, I, I detained the motion to approve the disclosure of appearance of a conflict of interest form submitted by Sergeant Thomas Ashley Junior.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Do you think we should just cause a recommendation? If we wanna jump to the, um, interview.
Sure.
Sergeant Rose, and then we can go back to personnel issues and space for Louis. Cause he is on duty right now and it's, come on, dog.
The radio can go off at any minute. Never know when you get that big call.
Exactly.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Item agenda thirty, interview for police chief position, applicant A Sergeant Scott Rose. Welcome Sergeant Rose, how are you today?
Great, thank you for your time today.
Alright, Sergeant Rose, uh, as you know, and, and as the board knows, and the pub know, we've met a handful of times, uh, with the board, myself. Um, and, you know, today we wanna bring you in front of the board and speak with you regarding the, the position, um, for the chief of police.
Great.
The, the current chief is moving on to greener pastures. We, I'm sure we have, um, a dedicated and, and, uh, a phenomenal employee in you. So we have a few questions for you.
Sure.
Alright, so I hope you're ready. It's hard-hitting ones.
Alright.
You know, I'll ask a couple. I'm sure the, uh, board may have a few. And at the end, if you have something for us, feel free to, um, feel free to ask. And if you do get a call, you're more than welcome to step away. No points deducted, I promise.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so for, not just for us here, uh, on, at the police station, for those listening at home, Sergeant Rose, can you please tell us about yourself?
Sure, um, I've been a police officer here in the Commonwealth now, uh, starting my third, uh, thirty-second year. I started in nineteen ninety-two, where I was appointed as a part-time reserve officer in the town of Berkeley in nineteen ninety-four. As a, a part-time officer, I was upgraded to a full-time status, waiting for the opportunity for a full-time academy to appear, but I was working full-time hours during, uh, that time period until nineteen ninety-six, where I attended the, uh, full-time police academy. And, um, after that, uh, academy, I worked in Berkeley for approximately about a year and a half, and I had an opportunity to, uh, get employed here for the town of Freetown. And for that one-year span, I worked for both communities, town of Berkeley and the town of Freetown, and then the full-time opportunity came here in Freetown. Where, um, was worked as a patrolman. At some point in time, I was promoted to sergeant approximately ten to twelve years ago, and I've held that rank up to this point. I've been working as a patrol supervisor, along with the other responsibilities of a accreditation manager and training supervisor. And, um, it's been, it's been a great career here in Freetown. Love working here. Prior to going into law enforcement and directly out of high school, I did, uh, enlist in the United States Army. And straight out of high school, actually, I enlisted, uh, just while I was in high school and they called it delayed entry program. So I made that commitment even before, um, leaving high school. And right after high school, went to basic training, uh, served, uh, three years in the active duty army, stationed down in Fort Polk, Louisiana, but I was happy to come home. It was a great experience, but again, uh, love Massachusetts. I did enlist in the United States National Guard, and I, uh, was accompanied in the, uh, National Guard unit in Fall River, and I, uh, maintained that, uh, National Guard status for six years. I left there with the rank of E-five sergeant. So up to this point, uh, I've, uh, made it a permanent home here in Freetown and, um, I love working in the community and it's been very, uh, uh, humbling experience working here in town.
Excellent, excellent. Um, so you've just cited many relevant experiences, right? Character traits and other items related to this position. What makes you feel you're the right candidate for this position, the police chief?
Well, I believe, uh, even right after high school and being groomed for constant, um, public service. My first, again, my first public service was for the, for the government as a, a soldier for the United States Army. By being a part of that, I had the opportunity to work on a number of other ranking staff members and learning the experience of being, and, and learning what a good leader is all about. Um, that extended even after the active duty army and to the National Guard, and even to the police department. Again, the paramilitary organization, but obviously rank is relative to law enforcement. And I was able to display that as I continued on with my career. And, um, always looking forward to better myself as a leader.
Excellent, yeah. Only way to grow, is to keep learning. So a- as you can imagine, stepping from one role to another comes with its own sets of challenges, right? What do you foresee a challenge for yourself in this role over the next few years? And how, how do all of those?
Well, obviously, it's, it's a big transition, moving from the current position that I'm at into the chief's position. And we've been slowly trying to, um, uh, provide a, uh, a clear transition into this, uh, point with, uh, Chief Abbott by taking the time and, and going over certain, uh, roles and responsibilities as a chief. And I've been able to sit with him and gather all that knowledge as much as I can with the time that I, that I'm, the limited time that I have, to be able to apply that as I go forward. To, again, being able to, um, harness all that knowledge from Chief Abbott, almost twenty-five years of experience. I wish I could, had spent more time with him, uh, directly, um, leading up to this, uh, position. But, uh, we're doing the best we can and obviously, not only with Chief Abbott, but we're working with all the staff members, gathering their feedbacks. That's all very important and relative, cause it all has a different, uh, aspect of their positions. And it's only gonna make, uh, my decision making better as we go forward.
Well, you might, you, the rest of my time here with other board members, if you have any questions for Sergeant Rose?
Yeah, I, I have one question. Or, so I know you've been involved in, in, in our police, uh, department, maintaining and giving us accreditation and that program. Can you just speak a little bit to that, cause I think it's a really important kind of, um, you know, role that you've filled in?
Sure, the, the Mass Police Accreditation Commission is a nonprofit organization that strictly, um, provides professional law enforcement standards for the law enforcement community here in Massachusetts. There's over three hundred and sixty standards, and all these different type of standards is all relative to any type of aspect within the law enforcement agency. It could be, uh, relative to, uh, hiring of personnel, your policy and directive system, um, your property and evidence room property control. All aspects of the police department. And over the years, as the accreditation manager, and I think back, like, it's been such a long time, but it's over ten years of experience as accreditation manager here for the department. It has been nothing more than a great learning experience by going out into the, um, other law enforcement agencies and visiting and seeing their operation practices and being able to bring it back here to the Freetown Police Department. We're always evolving in some form of operations of the department. Technology changes, operations change, and we need to keep up with the times. And by maintaining that relationship with the other communities and the other law enforcement agencies, we're able to share and pass that knowledge along, so it's in, uh, an easier transition for those changes that do need to be made.
It's a huge network. And I mean, I had the privilege of coming in and watching what they were doing. And it's pretty intense with the amount of documents they're going through. And if I remember correctly, it was something as simple as, weren't they the ones who figured out that we had the some issues with like some of the maintenance stuff, like on?
Correct.
So, so, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's pretty intense. I mean, I didn't.
Well, I mean, that's great. Keeps you honest, right?
Exactly, exactly. So you invite, uh, uh, an entity to come into your agency and to open up all your files, complete tour of the, the station. They wanna see everything that, uh, includes the, the police department, your responsibilities. So, um, you have to keep an open mind. Uh, you have to be able to, if they do pick out a flaw that we have missed, we should be able to embrace their recommendations and incorporate into the police department. And we've always been a, an agency that welcomes that. Um, I, I am challenged the last assessment team to say, well, look, bring it on. I want you to find things that we can approve on, cause that's the, the only way we're gonna make ourselves better.
And that, does that lead to, you know, decreased insurance price, like, costs? Is there any kind of, besides just the benefit of us being a part of it? To just be the best possible police department we can be? Is there other kind of financial advantages of that or?
Sure, so by, um, the recognition of the accreditation award, initially, we got our certification, then later, uh, got the higher award of accreditation. That award is recognized through the town's insurance company. Exactly how much money we save from that, I'm not really sure, but obviously, whatever savings it is, is definitely.
Yeah, absolutely. That makes a lot of sense. And then I, you might have mentioned this, I might have missed it, but just, could you speak to any of your higher education that you've?
Oh, yeah, sh- I'm sorry. So, um, back in, when I started law enforcement in the, uh, early nineties, I attended Bristol Community College and I received my, uh, two-year associate's degree from there. And then I later moved on to Western New England College and, uh, received my bachelors of science in law enforcement administration. And then, uh, from there, I've always continued my education with the accreditation process and diff- different other courses that are provided through, uh, MPTC and MPI, whatever that I feel is, uh, beneficial to, to the department. Most recently, I attended the, uh, course of management's rights in law enforcement, being a very benefit topic as we go forward and looking at this position. So it's, it's a constant, um, upgrade in keeping up with your education to benefit yourself and the department.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You actually stole my thunder with your education one, so that's all good. I'll take it. I'll gladly take it.
Well, here's the hardest question of them all. And do you have any questions for us as you're selecting?
Well, uh, off the top of my head, no. You, you guys have been a pleasure to work with. Um, you've been upfront and honest. You've always been available, so if I had a question or, uh, needed to talk to, so I have no, uh, qualms with that. It's, it's been, it's been great working with you guys so far. And again, I look forward to advancing my career and, um, look forward to working with you in that capacity.
Just one thing I'll mention too, is we did get a letter from the union recommending that, um, you as, you know, for this role, so I think that, that goes a long way.
It does. I really appreciate them. It looks like I do have a lot of support of the personnel in the department. That's a big, you know, big hurdle, right? So, um, and I look forward to them, even like some of these educational classes I've been taking, and one of the the biggest pieces of vices that were given to me as I go forward is having that open relationship with your bargaining units, because you can save obviously a lot of, um, aggregate aggravation if we can be able to work out these items to benefit the department. Obviously, at some point in time that we can't, can't come to an agreement, we can, uh, take other avenues, but I think it benefits the town as a whole if we can work together. But I think it benefits the town as a whole, if we can work together to iron out some of these issues.
Well, I just saw a cruiser fly by with slides on, so it might be time for me to go.
Well, watch out, some of those signs take pictures, so hope not to be on the picture, right?
Don't see me, you didn't see my collar, my face.
Oh, no, no, I think we're good.
All right. Well Sergeant Rose, we thank you for coming down and speaking with us and you'll be here for most of your very near future.
Great, great. Thank you for your time, I'll get back to work.
All right, appreciate it, sir. How are we going?
All right, moving on to, oh, moving back to agenda item number twenty-nine. Discuss personnel issues and space concerns.
We're talking about space as in physical space here, not about the outer space.
Not yet.
It feels like a little bit of both, actually. But no, yeah, I, I just, you know, we have, we had Melissa resign from her position in the town hall. And obviously we need to fill that position. And we had somebody resign from the position within the clerk's office. I believe there may be some movement within the town hall that the floater may be going into the position in the payroll coordinators, which that means now I'm looking for some part-time person in the assessors, part-time person in the planning, because the floater currently covers those two. Part-time person in the clerk's office. I could combine them in any which way, so I could do one full-time and one part-time person. But the concern is really, honest to God, where am I putting these people? And there's no parking currently. And, and you know, we're not going to solve this problem tonight. But again, it's just me reiterating the problems we're having within the town hall in every department, or most depart, I shouldn't say every. A lot of departments need more staff, they really do. They're working at a hundred and ten percent. And I can't give them staff, there's no room to put any more staff in that building. So I just, it was more of a just to let you all know, and I know you all know it, but it's just to keep reiterating our problem and I'm not quite sure. It's a problem I really, not an easy fix. Like, you know, some things are easy for me to come up with solutions, this one is extremely difficult.
No, because no matter what you do inside those walls, the parking is still an issue, right? And there's so many other issues beyond that, but it's just.
So Deb and I were talking.
Yeah, it was probably him, no.
So Deb and I were talking and we were like to propose something to the board and then come back to the board at a later time. Working with Carl and Deb, doing a walkthrough of the building, looking at the floor plan, potentially changing a couple of things around. Whether it's shelving versus a desk, putting it on the wall, making it maybe changing offices, we don't know. Looking at square footage and ability, looking at the weight of the buildings, if it's not tilting one way or the other. And then come back to the board at a later times, sometime this summer after town meeting and present to you what we have found with suggestions moving forward.
That's fine, I mean, I mean, I, I think regardless, I mean, I think, I think taking some action is better than no action, right? But we know, we need, we need a new town hall.
It's a Band-Aid, but a Band-Aid will always help stop the bleeding.
And that's what we're looking at, like, you know, there's like, if you look at the entryway, you have a desk with like recycling signs. Well, those could be on a folder somewhere hanging on the wall. Right, now you have the ADA compliance issue, right? Fixed. The, the flag and the chair, the P O W chair, we were discussed with all parties. And I think it would look, I think it'd be better purposed here at the police station versus there, right? It's on a stand, right? More visibility, more, like I said, memorial, things like that. Small changes, everybody will have a baffle, so you can speak through it, right? Versus trying to get underneath the, like, hey, how you doing down there, right? Type of thing. Small changes, but effective changes that'll make the flow a little bit better. Maybe swapping offices to a bigger office, small office, if you have more personnel. Again, nothing's off the table, nothing's on the table at the moment. We just want to make sure we, we have the, the board's permission to move forward, working with Carl, Deb, and all the department heads as well, right? And then come back to the board sometime down the road, sometime this summer, I would think, we can put it on the agenda and then show us our findings.
That's, that's cool, me.
It's just, like I said, this was just to, again, reiterate, I don't know where I'm putting staff.
Yeah, yeah. Now I hear you. And then I think, I mean, going through that process, I think it's useful anyways, just so we can, like, when, when, when we do have to go fight that case and ask for, you know, we have to ask for money at some point, being able to really have specifics and, you know, just going through that process will probably highlight a lot of those problems.
I think what, or, you know, selectmen Lobes is talking about, like, let's, let's look at maximizing every inch of what we currently have.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, there's not a lot of wiggle room, but there are some things that I think that can be maneuvered that we could get a little more.
To your point, fixtures, right? Like changing some fixtures might create one more square foot of space, which doesn't seem like much, but in an office, it's something, so.
Something, yeah, where Cheryl's got files piled up all around her.
Right. And we have building issues, right? It's been held that size, it makes sense to put on the other side where the building isn't slanting. So that's why Carl comes in and everything else is, does that make, again, nothing's been perceived, nothing's been, like, there's nothing in writing yet. But we want options to know, hey, instead of having it on the right side, should you be on the left side? Should every door have a window? Should every door have a baffle, so you have to screen through the window?
And every part of this screams making sense to me. The only one downfall I'll say is if you start trying to switch offices, we're talking about employee concerns. You want to talk about someone getting upset, it's when they're going from a bigger office to a smaller office. And they feel like that office is already.
We'll see, that'll be the recommendation, and then if we decide not to go for that recommendation to, for personnel reasons?
But unfortunately, we all know that people will know and then they'll be upset before any decisions even made. So it's, there's no, that's the only downfall, and I'm not saying we don't do it, I still think we do it. I'm, I'm just saying that out loud, I guess, because I'm.
It's real.
It's real.
I'm looking at all of, even like the, the size of our desks. Some officers have desks the size of eight of these desks, like the old school, old desks. They're, they're beautiful, guess what? You could probably remove that one desk and add two more people to that office, just on the square footage of the desk alone. Again, this is just things being said out loud, but we do have to look at every option, especially as we've looked at, we've looked at the bank, you know, shot down at the town, at the town meeting. So we need options and this gives us a few more, maybe not the, the best, maybe not everyone's going to be happy, but we will work with all department heads to make sure.
I still like the bank option.
Do I? Yeah.
I, I, I really do, I'm not going to lie to you, I just, I don't know that we're going to get enough square footage out of reorganizing things within the town hall. I just think Cheryl's office, the clerk, the town clerk's office, with the amount of files and the stuff that she has to keep. I mean, she's, she has to struggle because she has to keep file, like, stuff everywhere, stuff in the basement, stuff in the math room, stuff in her office, stuff like, I swear to God, they're sitting on boxes of stuff. It is very, very difficult. And then, then we talk about that early voting, that is extremely hardship, scream hardship on the town hall because now she's setting up booths in the hallway and as employees are trying to maneuver through other employees, you know, you know, you're bringing in three more employees sitting in the hallway. So you're walking into that. I do think at some point, and the bank, I mean, is still available as far as I know, we don't know when that's going to be leased and when that's going to be an option. But I still, I still think that was a good short-term, you know, three to five-year fix for some space. And that's still not going to fix everything, but I still got people up in that attic that is a, is a concern of mine, you know?
I was up there the other day saying hello and I was like, looking at her going, oh my goodness, I'm going to fall through the floor.
I struggled to get up the stairs to the.
You know, and it, once again, this all makes sense, I guess my only thought is, is, you know, layout, if we're going to go in and say, relay out an office space, who do we have that's going to help determine that, right? I mean, and we all look at things and make sense of it, but is there someone that we have or someone that we can work with that would be able to come in and say, based on this space and your needs, this is what would make the most sense? This size desk, this?
Yeah, Collins Center study gave us some information on how they looked at different things, right? So we can look, look at that as a precursor of how we tackle this, right? This is just a discussion to make sure the board is, you know, on board and it sounds like we are. So when we get into it, I think I want to look at the Collins Center study and see how they looked at how they calculated square footage per person. I think, you know, like, look, thinking back at it, I think per town employee, right? And this is their study, not my, I think every town employee or government employee is, should be allocated ninety-six square feet, right, of office space, right? I believe that's how they're calculating it, not saying that's how we're doing it. But there is a math in there as far as how much each employee in theory should have based on their, on their position, so.
But I guess I'm going to use Cheryl's office back again, because it's what we're talking about, like determining a layout of, okay, we're going to change the desk, we're going to change this because this will help grant space. Is there something beyond changing desk to a smaller desk? Because if we take that desk and put it where the existing one is, does it really gain us any space or what?
Well, one of the things for her is the storage. So what we've discussed in the past, and I think we all discussed and said yes to, is where the school is, build her like a little shack, a little area inside to protect the files she's to protect, right? So not just a window, it's also key locked in the other building, right, the school, right? So that'll open up some of the files that she has to store, some things she's dared to her heart, like the, the records from like the sixteen hundreds from the Mayflower, things like that.
I knew it was saying that there was certain regulations and I don't want to go down a whole rabbit hole with this because it's, you know, whatever. But I guess I just want to make sure that if we do it, it's methodical as far as like having, not just saying, okay, we're going to go out and buy all this new stuff because it's going to create new space, but we're not creating anything of usable space. So I guess it's something we can talk about down the road.
I mean, the only thing I can tell you is I think, and I have to, I have to, I have to think about all the grants. I think we got a grant. We got money to do the town feasibility study and I, and we got a grant to do town feasibility study. And I used the grant to do a portion of it. And I think there's some funds left that we could spend on town hall. Like, yeah, re, like, having them, the architect actually draft something. If we, if we, if we walk through and find that it makes sense, because we have to worry about supports. We know that that building has a lot of weight in it. So there's, this is just a preliminary, just, you know, again.
It's just a discussion to move forward and see what's out there. Because my concerns are the weight, the weight-bearing timber logs holding the building up, you know? What if it's leaning one to the right, I would like the weight to be to the left, that way evens it out a little bit in a sense, so.
Or is there a vote on this now or do we kind of?
No, I think there's just a discussion, I think we all agree. But, you know, we'll, we'll keep everybody apprised and put it on the future agenda.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we're to sign?
It's funny when you, when Carl said that, because I'm like, yep.
You know, I read it so many times over the weekend going, what, Formula One, they get what? Mario Andrade is coming to town.
I want to go, I want to meet him.
These pens, mine already feels like it's going dead.
The only reason I don't give them those ones is if they click on.
Yeah. I recall myself unclicking something, I was, I was doing this, I couldn't even click it, I was clicking.
It is earlier. You scared me, like, we have to draw that, what is that?
Lynn, do you want all three of us to sign this one? This is what opposed it.
You couldn't have them sign it and hold it. I didn't realize it was on tonight's agenda, that's why I questioned you. I'd seen it, but I'm like, I don't know, I didn't think we got it on this, I didn't think we got it on the agenda. I thought it was the other one that was on there, the first one that was signed, and it realized we're on this agenda.
Two for the next three, the two on top of each other, just to make sure, the parchment one, you got both, perfect.
We've been trained very well. We caught a few of our own mistakes today, we're like.
Couple of RFPs.
Have Lynn tell us, we gotta do it over. We're all learning.
All set.
As long as you're here for June fifth.
All right, with that, I will. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.